Good evening, everybody. It is now 6:04 PM and I'll call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum present and this meeting has been posted in time and manner required by law. The month meetings are open to the public, although those meetings are public, comments and questions from the audience will be confined to time designated for citizens to address the board. This time we'll go into closed session and it's now 6:05 PM. Good evening. Want to welcome our friends and family members here tonight and we have a lot of celebrations and recognitions tonight. So, thank you for being here for this special time of year for all our students and staff. Meeting was called to order earlier. We're reconvening now into open session. We're moving on and we'll start with our invocation tonight. And at this time we'd all rise, I'd like to ask our Vice President Chad Johnson lead us in our invocation.
Good evening. Heavenly Father, thank you for this time we can gather tonight. To God, we ask your continued blessings on our district. We ask that you watch over our staff and our students as they make their way towards the end of the year, that you give them strength and endurance. Father, protect the students, protect the staff. As we meet here tonight, honor these students, we give you all the praise for the wonderful things that are going on in our district. Father, we just ask as we go about the business of the district tonight, that you would grant us wisdom and that all that we do bring to your name. It's your name we pray.
May be seated. So, this is the time we have our pledges, but we'll start off with our Students of the Month. First, we'll have Mr. Wesley Benjamin, Principal at Forney High School, to introduce our Secondary Student of the Month. Following that, we'll have Ms. Kristi Mock, Principal, to introduce our Elementary Student of the Month.
Ladies and gentlemen of the school board...
Can you hear me now? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, Dr. Terry, esteemed guests and fellow educators, it is my great honor to introduce to you our Forney High School Student of the Month, Benjamin Lopez. As a senior... Come on up. You can stand right here. There we go. As a senior at Forney High School, Ben is a remarkable young man, whose diverse talents, dedicated work ethic, and unwavering commitment to his community have made a lasting impact on our school. As Mr. Fournier, one of Ben's teachers, shares, "I'm not sure I can adequately talk about Ben in anything resembling a short paragraph. Ben has made a lasting impression on me as a teacher and a person. He is friendly, always smiling, and super intelligent. He is always willing to help those around him who might be struggling with content and is a natural leader. He is still the friendly, smiling, and super intelligent person willing to help others that I met three years ago, just taller and maybe a little wiser. I hope that we will remain friends for the rest of my life." In the realm of athletics, Ben has dedicated the past eight years of his life to taekwondo. As a second-degree black belt, Texas Taekwondo team member and taekwondo instructor at FTC, he has proven himself to be a formidable competitor both nationally and internationally. His incredible achievements include becoming the national, a national champion in 2019 and serving as a sparring partner to a Mexican Olympic team member. While he is known nationally as a fierce competitor in the taekwondo community, to many young aspiring athletes in the Forney area, he is simply known as Mr. Ben, their good-natured and patient taekwondo instructor. Ben's accomplishments extend to the arts as well. Not only is he a classically trained pianist, having performed in this very room for our school board when he was in sixth grade, he's been published in Echoes Media with an article titled "Generations: A New View," which won the 2020 Echoes Media You Speak Writing Contest. Academically, Ben ranks in the top 10% of his class and has committed to attending Baylor University where he will major in biochemistry. He has been recognized also by the College Board with a National Hispanic Recognition Award. Throughout his academic journey, Ben has been the epitome of perseverance and dedication. Mrs. Peters, his AP Statistics teacher, commends him for consistently giving 110%, stating, "I've been teaching seniors my entire career and nearly all of them succumb to senioritis by the end of the year, but not Ben. He has consistently come to class every single day and given 110%, even recently here at the end of the year. AP Statistics is challenging for most of us, but Ben hasn't even remotely given up on it. To top it off, I don't even think I've ever heard him complain once in the two years that I've had the privilege of teaching him. That is the kind of student that Benjamin Lopez is. He is hardworking, self-disciplined, insightful, innovative, and respectful. He truly embodies the Forney family values. It is with immense pride and admiration that I present Benjamin Lopez as the Forney High School Student of the Month. Congratulations, Ben, for your outstanding achievements and for being an exceptional role model for your peers and for the students here in Forney. We are confident that you will continue to make us proud as you embark on your next journey at Baylor University and beyond."
Now, correction here. This is Jenny Harston and she is a student from Lewis Elementary, Tennessee.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. And Dr. Terry, I would like to present to you our May Student of the Month for Lewis Elementary, third grade Stratton Williams. He is here tonight, got several people in the audience. His parents are Ashley and Zach Williams and he is an awesome big brother to two younger brothers, Statham and Shepherd. Stratton is always smiling when you see him, always willing to help others and is a role model for his classmates. His parents will tell you that there are many people in Stratton's life that have played a role in the fine young man he has shown to be. While his parents deserve a ton of credit for the amount of integrity and the huge heart Stratton has, he does have some amazing educators that support and guide him each day. Here are some things his teachers have to share about Stratton. His classroom teachers this year, Ms. Cummings and Ms. Albino, say that Stratton is a student that exhibits empathy and integrity. He goes out of his way to help other students or adults. He does the right thing even when no one is watching. He is an all-around great guy. The way he helps his peers that learn differently is exceptional. He is so incredibly patient and kind. He is responsible and consistently puts forth his best effort to succeed academically. He has been such a joy to have in class and they can't wait to see all the amazing things his sweet soul will do in the world. Coach Warner was eager to share that Stratton is a fantastic leader in the gym. Not only is he a phenomenal athlete, she says, "North Forney Falcons, get ready, he's going to be a star," but his attitude and sportsmanship towards others shine bright. Stratton is always willing to lend a helping hand to students that need a little extra support or guidance. He cheers for everyone and truly gets excited for them when they succeed. Stratton has always had the best manners and desire to be a great student. He dreams of playing college basketball for North Carolina and then after college go into the family business, working for his dad's lumber company or uncle's concrete company. He loves art and playing sports. Basketball is his number one, but he also enjoys lacrosse and football. Stratton wanted to share something that he and his family say in the morning before school. Have fun, use your manners, be a good leader, be encouraging, be confident, be honest, show humility, and work hard. And these are not just words that they say in the morning. He is living proof of this every day. From all of the amazing things I've shared, it is obvious why Stratton Williams was chosen to represent Lewis Elementary as our Student of the Month. He exemplifies the spirit of a model leopard and we couldn't be more proud of him. Congratulations, Stratton.
Could you all rise for the pledges, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Continue with their recognitions. We're going to move on now to 4A, starting with student recognitions of their top 10 students for the graduating class of 2023. I'll turn this over to Ms. Kristen Zaskel, our Executive Director of Marketing and Communications.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. It's my honor tonight to present the top 10 students for both of our graduating classes and to do that, we have a special video for each class.
I'm honored to be announcing the top 10 students of the graduating class of 2023 from Forney High School and North Forney as a part of our student recognitions this evening. From North Forney High School, number 10, Nicole U. Walkaway. Nicole is the daughter of Lily Martin Walkaway. Nicole plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in biology. Number nine, Paul Olejinka. Paul is the son of Ottawa Lee and Yunus Olejinka. Paul plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in general mathematics. Number eight, Irvin Renario. Irvin is the child of Michael Miligos Renario. Irvin plans to attend the University of North Texas and major in studio arts to become a high school art teacher. Number seven, Caleb Phillips. Caleb is the son of Terry Phillips. Caleb plans to attend UT at Austin upon graduation, major in computer science with a focus in cybersecurity. Number six, Elias Maxson. Elias is the son of Sandra and Mike Maxson. Elias plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in biochemistry. Number five, Allison Begon. Allison is the daughter of Julie Begon and Louis and John L. Begon. She plans to attend the University of Nevada Las Vegas Honors College with a double major in entertainment, engineering, and theater. Number four, Nicholas Maxson. Nicholas is the son of Sandra and Mike Maxson. Nicholas plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in biochemistry. Number three, Abby McAlainus. Abby is the daughter of Natalie and Darren McAlainus. Abby plans to attend UT Austin and major in education. The North Forney Salutatorian is Holly Elliott. Holly is the daughter of Christine Bogus and James Bogus. Holly plans to earn her bachelor's degree and follow her pre-med track to the University of Texas at Austin. The North Forney Valedictorian is Cora Lise Jarrett. Cory is the daughter of James and Katie Jarrett. Cory plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in biochemistry. From Forney High School, number 10, Vito Benny. Vito is the son of Benny Joseph and Benah Hall. Vito plans to attend UTA and complete a BSN. Number nine, Sarah Ade. Sarah is the daughter of Stephen and Rosa Ade. Sarah plans to attend Texas Christian University to double major in music and graphic design. Number eight, Ariel Robinson. Ariel is the daughter of Ashley and Ladetrick Robinson. Ariel plans to attend UT Austin and major in nursing. Number seven, Bianca Salazar. Bianca is the daughter of Alex Salazar and Rosa Nelly Salazar. Bianca plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in biomedical engineering. Number six, Landon Coyle. Landon is son of Doug and Shelley Coyle. Landon is attending Texas A&amp;M University and is majoring in civil or nuclear engineering. Number five, John Chase. John is the son of John and Carissa Chase. John plans to join the United States Air Force. After his tour is complete, he plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University and major in engineering. Number four, Cynthia Sinco. Cynthia is the daughter of Chris and Black Sinco. Cynthia plans to attend Talton State University and major in electrical engineering. Number three, Brayden Donna Hugh. Brayden is the daughter of Todd Donna Hugh and Kelly Schmitz. Brayden plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in biology. Forney High Salutatorian, Savani Sajid. Savani is the daughter of Sajid Verlayudin and Shanti Mudhavan. Savani plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in government. The Forney High School Valedictorian is Harper Gross-Nicholas. Harper is the daughter of Chris Gross-Nicholas and Robin Pierce. Harper plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University and major in architecture. Congratulations to all our 2023 graduates.
All right, we're just going to keep the celebrations coming. We have so many incredible students. So, we also would like to recognize both of our high school student councils this evening. So, I'm going to start with our Forney High School Student Council. If you guys will join me up front here. Their representative, their teacher advisor is Philip Jenkins. This year, they took home several district awards, including Mr. Jenkins was the District Three Student Council Advisor of the Year, along with... Yes, yes. Along with state awards, including sweepstakes, outstanding student council, and many others. They also took home national awards with the National Gold Council of Excellence. So, here this evening, we have our officers and our directors for the Forney High School Student Council. And here with the North Forney High School Student Council, their advisor is CJ McClung. If you guys would join us for a photo. They also took home several district awards and state awards and national awards as well. A lot, I can't even count. I think there's probably about eight sweepstakes awards in there and outstanding student council as well. They also received the National Gold Council of Excellence. And one of the biggest honors I have been told for student councils across Texas is to have the state president. And for the 2023-2024 school year, North Forney High School will have the state president. Ms., and I hope I pronounce this correctly, Lan Abu... So, yep, we're good. So, but yes, Ms., I want to make sure I say this correctly. Lan Abu Sakar is the... Okay, sorry, say that? Abu Sakar is the student council, is the TASC state president for next year.
Moving on then to our next item, it's associate degree recognitions and Ms. Sarah Smith, Director of Future Readiness. I'd like to bring her up. Sarah?
All right. Good evening, Dr. Terry, Mr. Ferris, and Board. I have the honor of recognizing our Forney and North Forney High School students that have earned their associate degree. This is an amazing thing to get to recognize because these students are earning their high school diploma and their associate degree at the same time. So, not only are they doing all of their high school coursework, they're doing over 60 hours of college credit at the same time. So, these students have worked diligently over the past four years and we're so proud of this accomplishment. So, I'm going to start with our North Forney students. Ms. Allison Begon. Ms. Michaela Cleveland. And then from Forney High School, Ms. Cameron Benefield. Ms. Bailey Byers. Audrey Cox. Megan Loving. Reagan Mayner. Amanda Yates. Kayden Kilpatrick. Jaleen Avila. And Jada Scott. Please join me in congratulating all of our students that have earned their associate degree.
It's exciting to see that many. I remember that way back when we only had like one person that got their associate. So, see that number grow every year is amazing. Good job, ladies. Move on to our next recognitions.
All right. Our next recognition is for HOSA. And several of these students have already been recognized and I'm not sure if they're out taking pictures. Oh, perfect. Come on up. The HOSA chapter at North Forney High School advanced to our state competition in Round Rock. These students actually won first place in the HOSA Bowl at the state competition. They've been... So, they will advance to the national competition that's actually held here in Dallas in June. And these students also won a $2,000 scholarship along with first place. So, that's pretty awesome. They've dedicated countless hours of preparing for these competitions and we wish them luck at the national competition this summer. All right. And I also have the honor of... Y'all can come up here. Recognizing our North Forney FFA students and their advisors. These are the students that placed at the Kaufman County Junior Livestock Show in March. Our FFA students place a tremendous amount of time and effort into preparing for show season, caring for their animals. I can't even tell you how much work these students put into it. And each of them placed in the top three in their respective categories. Please join me in congratulating their students and their advisors for all of their accomplishments at show season.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Neil Weaver, Athletic Director, Forney ISD, to come to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Dr. Terry, members of the board and guests, it is always both a blessing to me and an honor to be able to recognize some great student athletes in our school district among a parade of great scholars and students tonight. These student athletes have been recognized by the Texas High School Coaches Association and the Texas Girl... and the Texas Girls Coaches Association as Academic All-State. They have to be seniors, they have to be valued contributing members on their varsity team, they have to have stayed with that team throughout their career as a student athlete. And very importantly, they represent our community and our school district in both district and state playoff competition across the state of Texas. And they are also scholars. They qualify for this award by GPA, class rank, an SAT and ACT score, as well as by their athletic accomplishments. So we're very proud of them. We have three sports represented tonight, and we're going to call them up by sport, beginning with basketball. On the girl's side, Coach Donald Fleming, North Forney, couldn't be here. Coach Jake Perry is standing in for him, and we'd like to recognize Zakaria Christian. On the girls' side at Forney High School, Coach Nick Hebert is here, and Ms. Amanda Yates. On the boys' side at North Forney, we've got Coach Mark Patton and his Academic All-State recipient, Mr. Galvin Solley. And on the boys' side, at Forney High School, I think I need to slow down a little bit. I need to slow down. Sorry, I'm going too fast. Boys' side at Forney High, Coach Bart Holloway has brought his Academic All-State recipients with him, Mr. Noah Walker. Christian Baker. Aiden McDonald. Ronnie Harrison. And very importantly, his trainer, Ms. Lexi Garcia. All right. Moving on to soccer. On the girls' side, Coach Tricia Williamson is here from Forney High School. She has a number of Academic All-State recipients, starting with Bianca Salazar. Both Academic All-State and selected as UIL All-State, which is a significant accomplishment on the playing end, Ms. Jada Scott. Ms. Ryan Cox. Kara Andrews. Kaitlyn Adams. Kaitlyn Johnson. Jaleen Avila. And Mariel Vargas. Wait on, girls first or wait on the boys? Go ahead and get it? Yeah. Thanks, Coach. I would be remiss if I didn't mention, both this girls' and boys' team were in the regional tournament this year, first time. Second time, girls have been to that round, first time tournament. Great accomplishment, high watermark for those programs. Coach Austin Walker with the boys' program at Forney High School, and Mr. Mario Avila. Edwin Jimenez and Antonio Maurice, I don't believe could be here this evening. Many of our students do work in the evenings. And manager, Ms. Brianna Williams. Moving on to tennis. Forney High School, Coach Turner Williams is accompanied by, may find him, Bryce Carlisle, Camden Slade. Come on up. Megan Loving. And Kayden Stellit. That's Forney tennis. Last but certainly not least, Coach David Spurgeon. And he's got four Academic All-State recipients, Reagan Calango, Nicole Awakwe, Savannah Gee, and Mark Noriega.
Moving on to staff recognitions, or more student recognitions. Mario Luna, Director of Fine Arts.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, and our school board. Yes, we are recognizing our State Visual Art Scholastic Event students. So what this was, and actually, this just took place, the students traveled, left Thursday afternoon, Friday, they did some workshops, and then the show was on Saturday, and they returned on Saturday. So what this is, is the highest honor for the art students. There was 32,000 works entered this year statewide. At this event on Saturday, there was 2,341 pieces. Forney ISD had six pieces and five artists. So our first student from Forney High is Alexa Austin. As the students come up here, we do have their yard signs for their houses. Our second student from Forney High is Hannah Houston, but she is sick tonight. So you can still. North Forney had three artists. The first one is Christopher Clarizio. And then Victoria Lopez. So with Victoria, she had two pieces at the state contest. And last is Evelyn Acosta. So with Evelyn here, she actually received a gold seal. So what a gold seal is, is even the highest, highest of the highest honor. So out of the 32,000 pieces that went, there was 2,341. On Saturday, they only picked 151 pieces. And these pieces actually go on tour for the rest of the year. So we were not able to have her piece of artwork, but if you know me, I have friends, so I called someone, Big Jays, because Big Jays does everything for me, and they actually did this in like a few hours. So the other students will have their artwork returned, but just like we said, that real piece will be at the state capitol and other places all throughout the year. Our teachers are here, Ms. Marinsky from Forney High. On Saturday, she actually presented a workshop to educators at the state event. Ms. Holliday from North Forney. And with Ms. Holliday, she is actually our Region 10 Norris Director. So she got to put the gold seal on her east, sorry, sorry, east, on her student on Saturday, which was super cool. And Mr. Coker from North Forney. And since I have the microphone, the district art show is next Saturday from 10 to 1 at North Forney.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to all the artists. At this time, we'll move on to staff recognitions. Dr. Judy Weber, Chief Learning Officer, will make some presentations.
Dr. Terry, Mr. Ferris, and school board members, I am very, very excited to share that Forney ISD is now an Educational Theater Association's premier community for theater education. This is an award that's very similar to the NAMM Best Communities for Music Education Award. This award recognizes and honors school districts that provide their theater programs with the resources to achieve high standards in teaching the theater knowledge and skills or the TEACs for fine arts. Janaye Glanton, Forney ISD's Fine Arts Coordinator, worked closely with our FISD theater team to complete the application. The state award qualified Forney ISD to be eligible for the national award through the Educational Theater Association. To qualify for this award, we had to look at class sizes, scheduling, resources, everything we do for our theater students. Forney ISD is one out of three districts in Texas. To earn the National Educational Theater Association's premier community for theater education, this honor will be held for the next three years. I'd like to invite up Ms. Janaye Glanton and thank her for her hard work this year with our theater programs. Additionally, I'd like to recognize the National Association of Music Merchants, NAMM Foundation, and we are pleased to celebrate this year's, we are another year for the best community in music education. So I'd like to congratulate our Forney Fine Arts Department, especially our music department. They are recognized as a school district among the best communities in the nation for music education. This award program recognizes outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and the community who lead music education as part of a well-rounded educational program. Designations are made to districts and schools that demonstrate exceptionally high commitment to access music education for all of our students. Data was collected and submitted, and I believe this is our ninth year in a row to receive this award. So I'd like to congratulate Mr. Mario Luna and the Forney ISD, again, Fine Arts Music Program.
Thank you, Dr. Weber. That concludes all of our recognitions. We're going to take a five-minute recess and then we reconvene. Thank you. We'll call our meeting back to order. We're moving on to item number six, which is our reports. The next five items are reports only and require no action from the board. Our first one is 6A, our master planning update, Ms. Kim Morzak, Chief Operations Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Board. I'm actually going to ask Jeff Fisher from Gallagher Construction to come up and present an update on all of our current projects. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Ms. Morzak. President Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board, good to be with you again, as always. I'll go through the updates on the current construction projects that we have underway for the district. The first one is the Keith Bell Opportunity Central. Do want to let you know that that project is coming along very well. You know, we've, we were talking about this morning, we've got about 90 days of push that we got to do to be able to get the early childhood center and the fine arts wing and the, as much of the retail space and classroom space as we can get done in order for that school to open, that center to open this fall, but that's what we're planning on doing. So it's coming along really well. You can see from the pictures, we've already got finishes going in, we've got ceilings going in, different areas. The one area that's probably lacking the most, which is what we've always planned, is the arena part of it, and that, that part will continue to be worked on after the start of the school year and be finished up by the end of the year. But we're real happy with the progress on that project, and it's, it's come along really well. This is just, again, some more pictures. You can see the arena there on the bottom, that's all starting to come together very nicely. Millwork going in, and the classrooms up top, and then the restroom finishes there in the center. The outside, coming along well with the masonry and the metal panels. Really starting to take shape over there. If you haven't been by, I suggest making a trip by there and taking a look at it, because that is a truly impressive building. Mary Lou Dewberry Elementary School likewise is coming along very well. The finishes are coming along on the inside, working on the glass storefronts and curtain walls on the outside. Building is completely dried in from a roof standpoint, and again, just pushing for the next 90 days to be able to get that school opened up in time for the fall semester to begin. And again, the project is in various stages of finish, but it's, it's coming along very well. There's just some more pictures of some cabinets going in on the top, the cafeteria and kitchen area there in the middle, and then the toilet, some of the toilets there on the bottom. That's just some more, more areas. One I will point out to you there on the bottom, that's the gymnasium storm shelter, working on putting the ceiling treatments in there, and that, that part of the building's coming together quite well. North Forney High School Freshman Edition Ninth Grade Center, coming along a lot better than the last time I was with you guys two meetings ago. We had just started getting the steel in, and you can see now that a lot of the steel's erected. In between that time, we've also got the precast panels for the storm shelter that have been erected. Those are complete, and we're starting on the second floor and roof steel inside the storm shelter area. Likewise, Forney High School Ninth Grade Center, got the stair, you can see in the top there, the stair tower, and then the structural steel being erected on the bottom. And that one is, by plan, it's right behind the North Forney project, so those are kind of being done in sequence. Transportation Center is nearing completion. We think here within the next two to three weeks, we'll have that project punch list done and be ready for the Transportation Department to completely move in. Obviously, they've already moved into the renovation area, but they'll be able to start using their shop areas here before the first of June and be able to move out of the transportation facility at the south so that that can be taken down and moved out of the way so we can move forward. Teamer is coming along very well. We've got all of our. We've got all of our permits for Timmer now, and so we're working on the underground storm drainage, you can see in the top. Most of the underground utilities are complete, and then we're working on the loop drive that goes around the east and south side of the projects, trying to get that ready to be put in, and then working on getting the foundation. All the piers are done, or piles are done, and most of the grade beams, we still have grade beams in areas D and E to complete, but again, that one has come along very well. Structural steel is scheduled to be delivered on that one around the first to the middle of June. Warren Middle School, likewise, we've got the permits complete from the city on that one, so it's moved forward, working on the underground drainage and site utilities and grade beams, as you can see there, the foundation. So I believe the, believe the structural steel for that one is scheduled to start delivering in the middle of this month. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Moving on to 6B. Our next item is our monthly financial report. Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Tonight's monthly financial report is for the operating results through March of 2023. Just to start off with, in the general fund, revenue collected year-to-date is $120 million, and that's 76% of the amount estimated. And as a comparison, in the prior year, we were at 75% collected at the same point in time. Year-to-date expenditures in the general fund was $125.1 million, or 76% of the amount appropriated, and in the prior year, at the same point in time, again, we were at 72% and for reasons that we've explained in prior board meetings, capital outlay items that we had to reappropriate from the prior year is, is the reason for the, the advanced, you know, the difference between the 72 and 76% expended for the year. Moving on to food service, year-to-date revenue collected was $5.5 million, and that's 85% of the amount estimated. That can be further broken down into $2.3 million was collected for student lunches and all cart sales, and $3.1 million was, was collected through the federal free and reduced lunch program. We had 102,000 meals that we served for the month of March, and in the prior year, for comparative purposes, we were 89% collected. And also in the food service funding, the year-to-date expenses were $4.4 million, or 55% of the amount appropriated, and again, prior year comparative, we had 62% expended at the same point in time, and, and, you know, in the prior months, we discussed the fact that the coronavirus pandemic had some, some impact on, on the comparisons from year to year, but also last month, we appropriated the prior year fund balance in expenditures of one, one and a half million dollars to purchase needed equipment that we had, you know, and we explained to you that month that we weren't going to probably spend all that, and as you, if you noticed in the consent agenda tonight, we've got about $200,000 worth of items that we've asked for a not-to- exceed basis. We've got a bid out on the street right now, and those, those, those items, as soon as they come in, then we're going to evaluate the bids and, and load, award the contract to the, you know, the best value of the district. And so, again, you'll see that in that consent agenda tonight for approval. And then we won't really have a debt service report tonight. We had pretty much concluded our debt service expenditures and revenue collections through, through February, but we're pretty much 100% expended and, and collected in revenue at this point in, in that fund. But as far as cash investments on hand at the end of March, we had, in the general fund, food service, debt service, and capital project funds, we had $428 million, the bulk of which was in our capital project funds. And so that concludes the report. Mr. President.
Moving on then to item C, our quarterly investment report.
This is the investment reports through the quarter ending March 31st. Cash investments on hand at the end of the quarter was $429 million. That was on deposit either at our local depository, Citibank, or in one of three investment pools, as you see there on the left-hand side. The interest rate that we earned in the quarter was anywhere from four to 4.7%, as indicated in the, in the section there that I highlighted. And then finally, the, the interest that we earned for the quarter was 5.4 million, the bulk of which was earned in our capital project funds, because that's where the majority of our deposits were. So that concludes the report. If you would like to...
Thank you, Mr. Chase.
...pass the next one.
Thank you for that report. So next item on the agenda is a announce of the, the tax collection report. Mr. Chase?
Our, our quarterly tax collection report, again, this is through March 31st. Our, our total property values, again, for the, for the year is 8.4 billion, and, and current tax collections to date was, was 111 million or so, and that's, that's about 98% of the levy, levy that we levied at the beginning of the year. The taxes from prior years, we collected 1.4 million, and that's, you know, represents about 1.2 or almost 1.3% of our, of our current year levy. And so for comparative purposes, down at the bottom, you know, at this same point in time, our five-year average collection rate was 97.5%, so we're a little, little ahead of that on our current tax collections, and then our, on our delinquent tax collections, we're at 1.4%, so a little behind there, but, but when you can, you know, all in all, when you take them together, we're, we're a little bit ahead of where we would be at this point in time in prior years. So pretty good tax collections so far, so far, and, and that concludes the tax collection report.
Thank you, Mr. Chase, for all those reports. I appreciate all your hard work. Moving on to 6E then is the school board compliance and non-compliance continuing education hours. At this time, I'd like to share with you the requirements for training for, are measured as, as of the first anniversary of the date of the trustee's election or the appointment or a two-year anniversary of his or her previous training as applicable. There are eight training areas for school board members to, for the continuing education. One is local district orientation. Two is orientation to the state education code. Three is post-legislative update to the text education code. Four, cybersecurity. Five, child abuse prevention. Six, elevating student academic performance and setting goals. Seven, team building. And eight, school safety. The following board members have exceeded the required continuing education hours. Barbara Jo Green, Becky Dobbs, Chad Johnson, Hannah Bateman, Katrina Burkhalter, Scott Regan, and myself, Greg Ferris. So I thank you all for giving of your time to get all your continuing hours and your service to our community. Moving on then to item seven is our public forum. At this time, the board will hear comments from the audience. At this time, the board will allot 30 minutes for tonight's public comments portion of the meeting. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students and employees and other community members by name. The board requests that the comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, be courteous and respectful. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, operational issue should present the complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. Speakers will be provided, will provide details about, who will provide details of a specific complaint will be stopped and will be referred to the district administrator for information about the grievance process. The board may not respond to any comments made and questions asked from, from the public. This time, we do have some speakers who have signed up, and I will call their names. The first one that we'll have tonight is Ms. Dana Curry. If you would make your way up to the microphone, please.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Terry. My name is Dana Curry, and I was abundantly blessed to have worked in Forney ISD for 31 years. Not only am I a product of Forney ISD, I come from a long line of Forney ISD graduates and a proud mother of two very successful graduates of the system. I have a heart and passion for the district, and the love continues to run very deep. As my niece just graduated last May, I currently have three nephews who are still attending campuses. You see, I am embedded. I cannot explain in words what Forney ISD has given me and how grateful I am to you and how this district has impacted me professionally and personally. Through the years, I have witnessed a lot of change, challenges, and celebrations within our school district and community. Much like life, the district also has experienced ups and downs. For an outcome to be positive, one must be strongly embedded in building relationships and have a passion for what they believe. That is true for Forney ISD. Forney ISD has stood firmly in placing relationships first and have a passion for learning and a vested interest in the children they have served. Even in the most stressful and challenging times, Forney ISD has continued to drive forward and motivate all to overcome each situation as they strive for the betterment of the future, our children. I'm here to say thank you to the teachers, the staff, Dr. Terry, and the board. The unselfish work that you do many times goes unnoticed. Most of the time, the few negative comments and actions of others ring louder than all the positive impacts that you provide after tirelessly work for the greater good. Do not let those voices overpower the good you are doing. There seems to be so much more negative noise in this world today. People are quick to react and respond without pause. Words are powerful. There are so many words that flow on social media which stir some of the thoughts and grumblings over misinformation. It can be exhausting and overwhelming to constantly hear negative comments instead of focusing on all the wonderful things provided by you and the educators in this district. Please know there are many people within this community who are thankful for the job you do. I hope that people like you will take the time to pause, think deeply before responding on social media, ask themselves, is this really something I need to say? Are the comments adding value, or how much I approach a situation to bring about positive situations? We should all have the desire to make the future better for our children, first by exhibiting the appropriate way to handle our concerns. Keep your heads high. I want to encourage the Forney ISD teachers, staff, Dr. Terry, and those on the board to keep making a positive impact in the lives of our students, the Forney ISD family. When criticisms comes and harsh words are thrown, keep striving to do your best and you can within the boundaries you're given. Stay humble, maintain a compassionate heart, and keep doing good in the little pieces of the world that God has entrusted you to make a huge difference. Thank you.
My next speaker is Stormy Thomas.
I'm probably not going to say it as eloquently as she did, but I am here to also show my gratitude to you guys. I'm Stormy, and I have two kids still in the district and have been here since kindergarten. One's a junior at Forney High School, and the other is a sixth grader at Ray. I just want to tell you guys thank you, and just say, for, far too often, people choose to speak at these school board meetings, to complain or voice their opinions on what they don't agree with because they don't align with their values or views. And on the opposite side, the ones of us who do feel that the district is doing a great job tend to stay quiet. That's the problem. The ones of us who do want to support you and are behind you with everything you're doing need to speak up. So that's why I'm here. I want to be a part of the solution, not a part of the problem, because if you don't come with solutions, you're never going to move forward. So I just want to say thank you, and I'm grateful for all the things that you guys are doing, and to remain focused when implementing those policies that in times are viewed as different or not well-liked. Those are needed for us to teach our children that life, there will be rules that must be followed as they go into life after school and the workforce. I think it is, in the current environment, as us as parents should take a moment to realize, it's our job to not give in to what the kids want at that exact moment, and to teach them that authority is not a bad thing, having rules are not a bad thing, and expecting them to be respectful is not a bad thing. So just wanted to tell you all thank you.
Next speaker is Savannah Zalinski.
Thank you, Dr. Terry, President Ferris, and members of the board. My name is Savannah McGelvin Zalinski, and I am a voter, a parent, and a proud FISD alumni. And I'm here tonight to express my appreciation for those of you who nominated the resolution to nominate Dr. Terry for Superintendent of the Year. I personally am thankful for all of the work that you do for our district as a whole and for staying strong to your convictions to best protect and support all of our students. I am grateful that my children will benefit from the tenured work and sacrifice put forth by members of this board. I am here tonight to ensure that it is clear that we are not willing to stay the quiet majority any longer, obviously, especially following an attack on our district and on our superintendent under the guise of accountability. I stand here in full support of all the staff, the teachers, Dr. Terry, and the majority of the board. Thank you for your time.
Next would be Sandra Taylor.
Well, I'm not one to write speeches. I'm Sandra Taylor. I've lived in Forney for about 30 years. I have dedicated about 25 years of my life to Forney ISD. I have volunteered for my kids all these years, and after all my kids graduated, I'm still volunteering for Forney ISD. I have never, ever seen such an incredible group of people before my eyes. I sat here and watched the things that are coming up, the things that you have done, the millions of money that you have to make sure goes to the right place and allocate what goes where, and I'm just so impressed. I know that there are nights, there are, that there are sleepless nights from all of you trying to figure out who, what, when, where, and why, and I just want you to know I appreciate it. I know that there are nights when you don't get to tuck your kids into bed because you've got to be at meetings, and I appreciate that. I know that there are times when you don't get to spend with your spouse because you're here doing things for our kids, and I appreciate that. I don't know if everybody appreciates that, but I do, and I've been here for 30 years, so I count more than anybody. You're doing a great job. A lady once told me, her name was Suzie, I think, when I was another distraught mother over things that were just ridiculous as I look back now, but she said, Sandra, you can't turn a ship in a day. Please calm down. And I went home and thought to myself, God, that woman's smart. And she's right. You've turned our, our little ship into a cargo thing that's, that's floating, and, and it has become this miraculous, wonderful thing, and nobody else could do what you have done for this district. Nobody. Thank you, thank you, and I know you cannot turn this cargo ship around in a day, but my God, you've turned it really fast. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. My next person is Dana Sneed.
My name is Dana McGee Sneed, and I am here tonight as a graduate of Forney ISD, someone who has volunteered within the district in multiple roles across multiple campuses, a liaison for church partnership with the district, and most importantly, a parent of children who will be fourth-generation graduates of the Forney school system. My oldest daughter graduated in 2021, and I currently have a 10th grader, a 5th grader, and a 3rd grader. Early on during my daughter's senior year, she experienced a situation with another student that went from him pursuing her for romantic purposes, him being upset when she did not return his feelings, him stalking her, harassing her, and it ended with her feeling unsafe in the classes she had with him. Initially, she tried to handle it herself, and once it became evident that her attempts to manage things on her own weren't working, she came to her father and I, and we immediately went to a counselor. The counselor worked one-on-one with us and involved my daughter's assistant principal. Would we have liked all the answers during our very first interaction with the school involving this situation? Of course. What parent wouldn't? Did we understand that there are specific actions and steps that had to be taken due to the legalities and nature of the issue? Absolutely. Were we satisfied with the end result, and was our daughter made to feel safe again? Yes. I had an opportunity to speak with multiple people over the last few days in regards to our school district, and with their permission, I would love to share some of those conversations now. As parents of three young children in multiple schools in the Forney ISD district, we appreciate Dr. Terry and all leadership for their stance on conservative values. We are comforted knowing that teachers and administration are looking out for... We are comforted knowing that teachers and administration are looking out for our children, not only in their education, but in everyday social experiences. Thank you, Dr. Terry, for valuing the integrity of our town and district. Another parent. I cannot imagine what it is like to manage over tens of thousands of children on so many campuses, but Fornie ISD does it so very well. To say school has been different since 2020 would be a huge understatement, but the level of care, compassion, education and everything that goes into our children has not changed. In fact, if anything, it has grown. I want to say how thankful and grateful we, we are for anyone who plays a role in the Fornie ISD school system. Another parent. We have three kids that attend Fornie ISD. With all the negativity circulating at the moment, we felt a need to just say thank you. Thank you to every educator, school board member, admin and the superintendent for the hard work and dedication that every one of you put into making sure our school district is thriving, growing and continuing to come alongside families and meet them where they are. Please know that we believe our community stands behind you and supports you. We fully trust with the majority of our current school board in place and with Dr. Terry as our superintendent, Fornie ISD can thrive and overcome challenges and obstacles we will face. In closing, I would personally like to say, in any community, there are three entities that you want speaking into the development of our children. These three entities will shape who that child becomes and all three have a responsibility and a commitment that others cannot fulfill. The family, the school and the church. Under our current leadership, I have seen our ISD passionately pursue building relationships between these groups. And that doesn't just happen well most of the time, but here with Fornie ISD, it's working. And why does that matter? Because our kids feel known, seen, heard and valued. When a kid feels known, it changes so they will become, changes who they will become and it changes everything. So thank you. Thank you, every teacher, administrator, employee and board member of the Fornie ISD school district. Please, please keep fighting the good fight. For every loud negative voice, please know that there are countless positive ones in the background cheering you on.
Our last speaker tonight, Ms. Krista McKay.
Okay, a little nervous. Um, my name is Krista McKay and I have been a part of FISD and the community for almost 20 years. Everyone who knows me knows I do not like the spotlight. However, I am compelled to come and offer my experience. Often in our current culture, the voice of a few dissatisfied customers tends to demand a disproportionate amount of attention. I'm here to add a counter perspective to this community discussion, which also reflects the opinions of many families I have served. FISD, the board and our administration have positively impacted not only my professional life as a teacher, but my children's education as well as the families I've had the opportunity to teach over the years. My years in FISD have been spent teaching at an elementary campus from opening new campuses to changing grade levels and subjects taught, to adjusting to new teams and administrators. As a teacher at FISD, I've always felt 100% supported by Dr. Terry, the board and the district. Since 2004, I've had the opportunity to serve 500-plus families. These former students and their families are what make my job so special. From this perspective, I'm able to continuously witness the lifelong impact of a school board and administration that highly values the teachers and the experiences of every student. For example, just last week, a former parent texted me that her son wanted me to know that he was accepted into law school. He's achieving great things and much of this is because of the education he received in FISD. Also, I'm currently teaching alongside two of my former students. Their time in FISD and the teachers that invested in them gave them the dream to be educators and impact lives similarly to what was modeled to them. Next year, I hope to get the opportunity to teach the child of a former student who is raising his family in Fornie. Generations are choosing FISD to educate their children. We know so many families that could move their children to private schools or a different district, but they continue to choose FISD because they believe in the teachers, administrators and board members. My own children have exclusively attended FISD and are currently thriving in ninth and sixth grades. This means that since kindergarten, their lives have been individually impacted by over 60 teachers. These teachers have poured into our kids, providing them with an excellent education that builds on their gifts so that they can follow their dreams. I can truly say FISD is filled with incredible teachers and I know our experience here in FISD is great because teachers want to work here. When teachers feel loved, respected and appreciated by the board and admin teams, it keeps good teachers in place. With the shortage of teachers, so many great teachers could leave to work in any district they wanted. However, great teachers are staying. One-third of all teachers now have five or more years' experience in Fornie. Leading all these teachers are committed, responsive administrators. Only twice in our kids' entire FS, FISD careers has a classroom issue motivated us to escalate to an administrator. Both times, we were heard and experienced responsive, responsiveness that led to resolution that showed care for our concerns. Dr. Terry and school board members, please know that as both a current teacher and parent, I have seen your years of hard work and dedication to what is now more than 16,000 students and 1,090 teachers plus staff and pay off in tremendous ways. I applaud how you strive to support teachers while giving each student the best opportunities to prepare them for their future and you respond to challenges that arise. Thank you for the time, the effort and the sacrifices you make on a daily basis to ensure that FISD continues to be a great place for teachers and families.
Thank you all. Moving on then to number eight, our consent agenda. Eight A is approved minutes from April 3rd, school board budget workshop. Eight B approved minutes from April 3rd, regular school board meeting. Eight C approved the budget amendment. Eight D approved a depository contract extension. Eight E approved Chromebook purchases. Eight F approved food service equipment purchase. Eight G approved furniture purchases. The board may take action on each item separately or collectively. May I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Ms. Bateman made a motion to, a motion of consent agenda collectively. Is that what you're saying? Okay. Do I have a second?
Collectively.
Who's the second?
Ms. Burkhalter.
Ms. Burkhalter, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any here or none? Closed session was taken earlier. That's already been done. We're moving on then to item 10, consideration possible approval of ratification employment professional contract personnel. May I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move that we approve the ratification of the employment contract as discussed in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Dobbs. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Green, okay. Change that to green, please. All in favor say aye again.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any here or none? Item 11, consideration possible approval for re-elect, uh, re-employment. That is not, uh.
No action.
Yeah, that one we're not doing right. Okay. No action on that one. 12, we have no action. And 13, we have no action. 14, Dr. Terry, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Spring is very much here, as you guys have seen in all the events that we have celebrated tonight, but they continue to flow throughout May. So I just wanted to point out, we do have a special call board meeting. That is on a Tuesday night. I know most of ours are on Mondays, but wanted to point that that is a Tuesday night on the 16th. And then we get to graduate. Our last graduation at Global Live Field and then we'll be moving home for the first time in a long time to Fornie ISD. So that'll be exciting for next year as well. And then I also wanted to point out Tuesday, May 30th is also a Tuesday. That'll be following Memorial Day for our monthly board meeting, our regular monthly board meeting. And Mr. Ferris, I think that's all the announcements I have.
Thank you very much. That covers everything on the agenda. At this time, our meeting will be adjourned and it is now 8:25 PM.